Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 21st Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could call them meeting to order in the roll, please.
Yes, Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Coulson?
Here.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Here.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Here.
Commissioner Nunley?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Everyone is present.
Everyone can now stand for the indication and the pledge, please.
I pray, eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. We thank you for this day. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Bless now, Lord, that you bring peace over for the Ukrainians. Bless those, Lord, that have lost their lives and bless their families. Bless us as we discuss the progress of county meetings tonight. Help us to make the decision that will be wise and prudent. That is, in thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Let's face the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible)
At this time, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Madam Corcoran has been moved improperly second.
Yes, Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Madam Manager, at this time, do we have any public addresses to the board?
We do, Mr. Chairman. You have three signed up to speak. If the attorney will read the opening statement, while we call the first speaker up, Charles Tucker.
Yes, good evening. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Speakers representing a group of individuals will be allowed up to five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address prior to speaking. I'll keep your time at three or five minutes, depending on the circumstances.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time. I'm Charles Tucker, President of Bellevore Volunteer Fire Department. I'm representing, or rather, a spokesperson for the Bellevore and Falkland communities. Please grant me at least five minutes, please. Back in 2018, bridge construction was started in Edgcombe County, NC 42, at Old Sparta. I was told then that the state, when the state finished that job, they would come into NC 222 Bridge and start construction the same way. The Edgcombe Bridge was built beside the existing bridge, and then the old one was dismantled. I was told that our bridge would be handling the same way. I found out the first weekend of March that construction was going to start in October of this year, and it would be demolished before it would be built back, without service for 18 to 30 months. The Bellevore and Falkland communities are separate communities, but they have always relied on the other one in times of need. They first unified when attending the same schools across that bridge until the mid-'70s. Each community had their own fire department starting in the 1950s. When Falkland had a fire call, Bellevore would be on the way over the bridge, and when Bellevore had a fire call, Falkland would be on the way over the bridge. Falkland Rescue also serves Bellevore Fire District and also is housed in Falkland, using the bridge as well to get to answer emergency calls. The County Landfill is also located on Falkland that serves the Bellevore District. Between the fire service, rescue service, sanitation work service, this engineered plan would devastate these two communities if plans continue without access over the bridge. Now, let's talk about transportation. The rock quarry located in Fountain uses this as the main route of transportation of its trucks over the bridge. American Materials, ST Wooton, ER Lewis, North Carolina Earthworks, Barn Hill Construction, and many, many more use this as the main route for moving their product over the bridge. Numerous citizens attend church on each side of the bridge. Private citizens travel through their jobs across this bridge. There was even a childhood fairy tale and song written for this bridge, and it goes, "Over the river and through the woods to Grandmama's House we go." Now, if I can sing for you, I'm serious, okay? How can you not see the impact this will have on us, the taxpayers, with such a simple fix? I am a farmer that farms on both sides of the bridge, and also own the peanut company that has growers on both sides of the River Bridge. And I'm smart enough to know that my selfish reasons are not important enough to alter plans for improvement, but the lifesaving reasons for a fire in EMS services are. As you can see, this affects our business community and livelihoods as well. Please, please, make our voice and concerns known to the state DOT. Pleased as Pitt County citizens and as Falkland and Bellevore citizens, you are our representatives. Please join us in raising a resolution to the state to adapt their plans that would include construction of a new bridge beside the old bridge and just closing one lane instead of choking the whole side of a county. Thank you for your attention. Now, I have a few facts that's going to go along with that. From Bellevore Fire Station door to Falkland Fire Station front door is exactly three miles. We always have ran almost like substations together. With the bridge closed, our next closest department would be 11 miles and nine miles for us, for Bellevore. For Falkland, it's going to be nine miles and eight miles. So, you can see how much time that saves in getting to response calls. There were over 862 calls in one year over this bridge, rescue and fire-related. One year, and they're talking about closing it for two. That's just one year. The sand mines, the rock quarries I mentioned, school teachers go back and forth across this bridge, hospital vehicles, law enforcement, our post offices in Falkland that we use. But now, get to some more facts. There's a bridge, I'm talking about Tar River, there's a bridge in Grimeson that was built, it was built on, had a new bridge built beside it, it was built through swampland. There was a bridge built in Washington, that chalked between Washington and Grimeson, that was built through swampland. There's a bridge built in Old Sparta that was built beside, all three bridges were built over Tar River and built beside the existing bridge. And they say they can't do ours. And my question is, why can't they do ours with the same history that the other bridges were handling? And I have received, and I'm sorry if I mention one thing, I have received in seven days, I've known about this eight days, and in seven days, I have received 922 signatures. I didn't want to bring 5,000 people here and mess y'all's whole night up, but I did bring 922 in a week's time. So, please, we are very serious. It's really desperate of us, and if y'all could unify the group and ask the DOT, I think y'all's voice will be heard more than mine. And please, I'm desperately asking y'all to assist Bellevore and Falkland communities and adopt a resolution to support our communities and support the people of Pitt County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, you have signed up Paula Dance.
Good evening. I will be speaking on behalf of an organization. First of all, good evening, Commissioners, and congratulations. I'm going to take this opportunity to congratulate our new county manager, Janice Gallagher, for your historic selection as our new county manager. I stand before you this evening to make a request to the board as you continue the arduous work of determining how the ARPA funds are best expended through public engagement and request. This serves as the Pitt County Sheriff's Office request as other organizations in the community have been afforded. I would ask for you to take into consideration hazard retention pay for all frontline first responders who selfishly continue to serve our community, even in the adversity of the unknown effects of this pandemic. I am not advocating just for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, but rather all the men and women who are frontline responders, who never closed their doors, nor had any control of being subjected to situations of constant exposure to COVID. Think about detention officers who are confined in congregate surroundings on a daily basis due to the very nature of their job responsibilities. During this continued pandemic, I could probably count on, count on two hands, the number of employees who did not become sick with COVID. This often led to working with staffing below optimal levels, further exasperating an already overworked and overwhelmed staff. Yet, these men and women continue to show up every day while continuing to put themselves and their families in harm's way, all in an effort to keep our community functional and safe. I would argue that by compensating our first responders, it would not only show them that they are appreciated, but would also go a long way in employee retention. Employees tend to stay employed with organizations who show them that they are valued. I recently spoke with a Wake County official about their recent decision to compensate every one of their 4,500 employees with what they labeled as retention bonus. He explained that this funding is being distributed in three installments, beginning in March, a second in August, and a final in October. The payments range from 3,000 to 4,000, dependent upon certain variables. Again, he said, "The thought process was to let their employees know that they are valued." It is important to note that Wake County used ARPA funding for these expenditures. Another example is Charlotte, who gave their employees a 5% increase over base pay during the pandemic. This showed their employees that they are valued. If the board takes this into consideration, I can provide a more solid proposal of what this will look like on an agenda item in the future. Thank you for your consideration of my request for how some of the ARPA funding could be spent while addressing retention issues at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. If we can now move on to the presentation.
For the side of we have a resolution honoring Amy Hadam. Mr. Chairman, if you'll come down front with me, and if the remainder of the board will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Madam Corcoran.
Yes, Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and the board, it is my pleasure tonight to read a resolution in honoring Amy Hadam for her years of service with Pitt County government. We are pleased to have Amy and her family with us tonight, and we'll give you a chance to speak once I run through this. And this resolution, which was signed by Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick and Kimberly W. Hines, clerk to the board, on March 21st, 2022, reads, "Whereas Amy Hadam was hired in the position of Public Health Educator II Coordinator, Women's and Children's Health Education at the Pitt County Public Health Department. And whereas Amy Hadam was promoted to Public Health Educator III, Health Education Director, on September 29th, 2013, promoted to Interim Health Director on January 8th, 2019, and then was promoted to Human Services Deputy Director, Deputy Health Director, on December 1, 2019. And whereas Amy Hadam has faithfully served the citizens of Pitt County for 33 years and four months. And whereas Amy Hadam displayed through her sincere dedication to her profession and to Pitt County. She demonstrated her dedication by her excellent attendance, her attention to detail, and by the high quality of work that she produced. And whereas Amy Hadam has been a model public health educator, exemplifying healthy behaviors at the workplace as well as in her personal life. And whereas Amy Hadam's astute ability to craft and convey health information to the public in a clear and concise manner has helped assure that important messages were heard and appropriate actions were taken during numerous natural disasters and other emergency events, including Hurricane Floyd in 1999 and the current COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Amy Hadam's steadfast leadership in Pitt County and across North Carolina has earned her widespread admiration and respect by her coworkers, community partners, and colleagues. And whereas Amy Hadam's dedication to excellence in her work has helped to secure our Public Health Department's reputation as a trusted and helpful agency that serves all people in Pitt County in an equitable and respectful manner. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Amy Hadam for her career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County, and honors her with this resolution of appreciation given under our hand and seal of Pitt County. Mr. Chair, you will present.
Thank you very much. Certainly, I miss you. No idea of the issues you've left to fill, and we have a pretty good idea of why you may want to spend some of your time with family.
Could we have her introduce her family?
Absolutely.
Please.
Sure. This is my husband, Mike, and if you're speaking into the microphone. Yes, This is my husband, Mike, my daughter Bailey, my granddaughter Peyton, and my son-in-law,
And if there's anything you'd like to say?
I'll say a few words. I do want to thank the board and to thank my colleagues, Dr. Silvernell, all the other department heads that are here. I've had an incredible career, one that's spanned 33 years and four months here, and actually, three years in another county. It has been an honor to serve the citizens of Pitt County and working to protect, promote, and ensure the health of all people within the county has been a great honor. Public health never sleeps. We never rest. We're always there quietly, working behind the scenes, making sure that our county is protected, and that is quite an honor to have worked with all my colleagues for all of these years to do that, especially the last two-plus years working in the COVID-19 pandemic. It's been an experience that none of us has ever had before, but I think we have all worked well together and worked to make sure that our county was well protected. I've always said that public health is one of the best-kept secrets in the county, whether it's this county or any county, because we quietly work to do our job, and if we do it well enough and nothing happens, nobody ever knows that we're really there. But we've certainly been front and center during the pandemic and appreciate all the support that we've received. And as we say, we are the best in the East and a leader in the state, and that is so true about all of our departments and public health as well. So, I appreciate all of your support, and I'm thoroughly enjoying my service.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, if we can now move on to items for report. Mr. Corcoran.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners, Ms. Gallagher, good day to call the night. Tonight, I bring you the February 2022 Tax Collection Report. Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 21, 2021 through February 28, 2020, excuse me, 2022, combined collection rate for real and personal property is 98.01%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 97.96%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. It's my recommendation for the board to approve the February 2022 Tax Collection Report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Madam Corcoran.
Yes, Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. If we could now move on to item number two. Madam Manager.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Nunley requested that masking be revisited by the Board of Commissioners for this meeting. I have Dr. Silvernell present in the audience for any questions that you may have. After consultation with him, it is the recommendation of myself and Dr. Silvernell that the board return to fully in-person meetings and that masking be optional unless otherwise required by law effective April 1st, 2022. I don't know if there's anything further that Commissioner Nunley wanted to add to that.
No, just a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Madam Corcoran.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Due to allergies and a certain college basketball game, my voice is struggling right now. I want to try to get through this and be pretty brief. If I fail, the manager or the planning director can probably step in, but I'll try to keep this pretty brief. Tonight, I'm here before you not seeking any specific action. Staff wanted to bring this proposal to y'all and to see if the board thought it was a good idea to tell us to go ahead, or if not, to let us stop. But so, just let me kind of walk through it real quickly. I want to contrast two different actions that y'all consider. First is a rezoning matter, which is a legislative decision, which that's when someone comes before you and they're trying to change their property from general commercial to residential, or vice versa, or any other type of shift. In that matter, your discretion to act is very high, and your legal liability in that scenario is very low. So, as the county attorney in a rezoning matter before you, I don't have a lot of heartburn about whatever action you take, because there's not a lot of possible legal liability, and your discretion is high. Contrast that with special use permits, which is not a rezoning, but they're brought to you by James Rhodes, so oftentimes they could possibly be confused, but they're separate and distinct. So, certain types of land uses in certain zoning districts have to be approved by a special use permit. I have them listed out on the slide there. I know that's bad for PowerPoint. I've highlighted three that I know that y'all have heard either recently or a fair amount in the past, and just highlight those. Those are sand mines, solar energy facilities, solar farms, and a data processing facility. And just, I want to point out that the Board of Adjustment also hears a separate class of special use permits, but the same rules apply to that board, but those aren't ones that you hear. Special use permits have a lot of procedural hoops associated with them. You're prohibited from talking to interested parties outside of the hearing. All testimonies under oath. Everybody who wants to talk to you on those takes an oath on the Bible, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. You're prohibited from relying on hearsay evidence, meaning you can't take into consideration signed petitions or letters presented by someone who's not in attendance. And also, expert testimony is required on a number of things, and specifically, anything related to property values or traffic impacts. So, like a certified real estate appraisal would have to testify about those matters, or a certified traffic engineer. So, citizens aren't allowed to testify on those type of technical matters, and those are just two examples in statutes. There's others. Storm runoff would be another example. So, in the special use context, you're making a quasi-judicial decision. You're supposed to be obtaining reliable evidence to determine facts, and your discretion is quite low. So, here, your discretion's low and your possible legal liabilities getting kind of high. So, in this scenario, I am concerned about what decision the board makes, because depending on which way it goes, there can be a resulting lawsuit. So, our proposal to you tonight, or concept that we're working out as staff, would be to eliminate special use permits. It would toggle that into something that's called conditional zoning districts, which the big takeaway is it makes it a legislative decision. Your discretion to act is very high, your potential legal liability is very low, and that's really the crux of it and why I'm before you tonight pitching it. And we think this will take several months to finalize and bring before you, but we just wanted to put it on your radar before staff got too far along. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions the board may have.
We're moving on with it.
I think unless you direct us not to, our plan is to move forward, and this is something that would have to go to Planning Board first for their review and comment, and then come back to you.
Yeah, I understand the process.
Staff is ready to move forward. Is that fair to say, Miss Manager?
Yes.
Do you need a consensus or anything?
Yeah, if you just want to have a consensus to move forward with that?
Yes.
Yes, everybody.
That certainly works for me. Thank you.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. You have in front of you tonight the financial report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund at the end of February 28, 2022. We are eight months into the fiscal year, so we're two-thirds of the way down, one-third to go. On the General Fund, we have collected revenues at a rate of 72.3%, while only spending 65.4% in solid waste. We've collected 87.56% of our anticipated revenues while only spending 67.11%. And in the EMS Fund, we have collected 80.35% while only spending 72.25%. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Motion approves.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Madam Corcoran.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, move on to the manager's report. Madam Manager.
Yes, thank you. I have eight items to report for you this evening. On your agenda, the first one are your next meeting dates, April 4th at 6:00 p.m. here in person and fully in person. April 18th at 6:00 p.m., again, here fully in person. And on April 11th, we'll be issuing a special notice for a board workshop from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. for dinner and discussion, and those details will be published in that special meeting notice. Second item is SNS Farms. You've previously heard that they were awarded Farm Family of the Year due to excellence in conservation, soil, and water practices, and there's an event at the SNS Family Farm for the Board of Commissioners and other invited guests on April 19th at 11:00 a.m. And we'd like the reminder for the board to attend that event, and you'll be hearing further from the clerk about that event closer to the time. Third thing is somewhat related to the public address to the board that you heard from Mr. Tucker this evening, and that is to let you know that the North Carolina Department of Transportation has sent an invitation for a local officials' meeting relating to the NC 222 Bridge replacement on April 27th at 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. So, that would be this board's opportunity to share their thoughts with the Department of Transportation team about that bridge closure and renovation work, April 27th from 10:00 to 11:00.
When would that be?
It will be at the Bellevore Fire Department. You have an invitation that will be in your weekly information packet. It'll look something like that, just a letter, April 27th, 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Bellevore Volunteer Fire Department, 4189 NC 33, in Greenville is the address. the address. There will be a separate meeting for stakeholders, but this is particularly set aside for local The next item I have is that we did this last year, but I want to announce that on Wednesday of this year, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, from ten A.M. to one P.M. at one oh-three Government Circle at the county's Northern Government Complex, there will be a Medicaid Managed Care Health Plan Outreach Event where various tents will be set up for those individuals who need information and assistance in selecting a Medicaid Managed Care Health Plan. We did this last year, and so this is just a reminder to those who'll be attending and to those who work at the Government Circle complex to know this will be going on outside on Wednesday. The fifth item is a report, as we're required by law to report on any settled claims, and the county did settle a workers' compensation claim with Harold Blake, Jr. for twenty-four thousand dollars with a release of all claims. The Industrial Commission approved the settlement on March fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and it was a result of an accident on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and that matter has now fully resolved. The next item, I wanted to give an update. At your last meeting and the one before, we talked about enhanced handicapped accessibility. And so staff got together and a team of us met, including Chris Barnes, the county's risk manager, Tim Corley, the county engineer, Brian Burnett, our finance officer, and myself, and we talked about, and Dawn Jones, our public information officer, talked about options for enhanced handicap accessibility. And we specifically focused on sidewalks, signage, automatic door openers, and review of our digital data. So not only would there be enhancements that could be made within Pitt County government to physical sidewalks and doors and things like that, and appropriate signage directing you to the handicap parking spaces or the handicap access entrances to buildings, we're also doing a review of all of our digital information to be sure that the vision impaired and others have the best possible access to all public information, both physically and digitally. And so I'd like to report back that we are having ongoing discussions about that. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, what I'd like to do is bring back at budget time an amount of money that will be recurring year over year for this purpose. We currently put about three hundred thousand dollars in your CIP, your Capital Improvement Plan, for facility improvements, for projects around this campus. What I'd be recommending is that this year, we set aside of that three hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollars for improvements to enhance handicap accessibility in each of these areas. I think that will allow us to get a big chunk of enhanced work done this year, and then recurring, depending on the expenses as they come forward, each year recommend that between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars of that three hundred thousand dollar pot of money be set aside for this purpose annually so that we are currently and consistently and constantly reviewing our handicap accessibility. And I think this even goes somewhat beyond handicap accessibility because it also just addresses regular pedestrian traffic. We did get, I did have conversations with the city of Greenville, the city manager Anne Wall, that were very positive about consideration of the city putting in a sidewalk along Sixth Street from the bus stop up to Hospital Drive, our private drive, which was a concern that Mary had about the city participating where there are city streets. I also, we also received an estimate for a sidewalk from Fifth Street all the way down to Moy, and that was in the fifty-five to sixty thousand dollar range. And I have a conference call coming up soon to see if the hospital is willing to participate out of the goodness of their heart towards that cost, and I'm hoping that they might since it would benefit both of us here in this complex. We've done a survey of the automatic door openers. Most of the main public entrances are already equipped with automatic door openers. To add additional would be about five to seven thousand dollars per door, and so that would certainly be included to make sure that we have every door and every access equipped to make it easier to come in. We have money within the existing signage project. I'm not sure if you noticed on your way in this evening some of the new signs that are out front, and Dawn in our public information office is working on those. She will explore and include within that this year enhanced handicapped access signage. So with all of those things, wanted to report back on the progress to date and see if it was okay with the board if we brought back that proposal for recurring funds at budget time the month after, next month.
Now, when you're talking about the handicap, you know, the ones that open, like a building that may have one in the front but not one in the back, we put one in the back.
Those are, yes.
But we're not talking about like every entrance or anything.
Not every side door.
Like a front and a back, or a front and a side, or whatever.
Exactly. Primarily where the public will be accessing.
And coming in.
And then I think most importantly, make sure that it's absolutely visible. So that those who are looking for a pedestal with a push button know exactly where to go and don't have to try three doors to get to the right one. Yes, exactly. Moving on, a good news item, item G. We were beyond thrilled to join Kimberly Hines in Concord, North Carolina this weekend at the North Carolina Clerks Conference where she received the North Carolina Clerk of the Year Award, a very prestigious honor by her peers of the North Carolina Clerks Association. And she was considered not only among all county clerks, all one hundred county clerks, but among all municipal clerks as well, and we know there are five hundred and some municipal clerks. So of that entire pool, we could not be more proud of Kimberly Hines for receiving that award of North Carolina Clerk of the Year. A press release will be going out shortly, and as the chair stated.
Whether she likes it or not.
Whether she likes it or not, a press release will be going out shortly. And as the chair stated, this really, for those of us who know and work with Kimberly, this comes as no surprise because of her commitment to excellence in her work. So thank you to Kimberly. And then the last item, and I'm glad Commissioner Albright is with us virtually. I mentioned to you some time ago that we were working on an educational campaign entitled Keep Pitt Green. And as the county starts to green up with grass growing and weeds growing, we wanted to provide some solid professional information in conjunction with Cooperative Extension and our horticulture specialists about proper use of weed control. And so in that process, we developed a Keep Pitt Green logo. Our public information office did a two-minute video and a thirty-second commercial public service announcement. And you'll see a print newspaper ad in the Daily Reflector. We'll have video ads streaming and broadcast. We'll push this out on social media and all of our digital networks and web pages of wnct.com, thereflector.com, pitcountync.gov, and Cooperative Extension at NCSU. So we will have a full pushout, and if the board will indulge for two minutes, I'd love to, number one, thank Public Information for their consistent, great work in putting out, I know you've seen several of these lately, but their latest video production educating the public about the use of glyphosate, which is the chemical that you'll find in common weed and grass killers.
Spring is here, and it's the start of the residential and commercial landscaping activities in our community. Keep Pitt Green by knowing the do's and don'ts of lawn care herbicide use. improper use of herbicides containing glyphosate can cause environmental concerns like ditch line erosion that impede proper drainage in our neighborhoods and business areas. Misuse of chemicals like glyphosate killed vegetation on ditch beds. You can see the soils exposed, so with big rainfall events, sedimentation occurs resulting in drainage issues and standing water.
We want to make sure that we're applying our pesticides properly so that we don't have unnecessary runoff into our local water systems or even seeping into our groundwater. If you go to a local garden center, you will find a dozen or more products that contain the chemical glyphosate. Careful consideration should be taken when applying a product that includes glyphosate as it is a non-selective herbicide, meaning that any type of plant that product touches will receive damage or be killed.
Garden supply stores offer a variety of non-selective and selective herbicides, so we encourage users to read the label to ensure a safe and effective application. Take a minute to review the active ingredients, directions, and optimal conditions for use. You may find an alternative better suited for your landscaping needs.
Recommended alternatives to glyphosate include selective herbicides, which target specific plants like broadleaf weeds, grasses, and sedges. Spending a few minutes at the beginning of a pesticide application to properly identify a weed and read the label on your pesticide product will ensure an effective application, saving you time and money long term.
Join me in learning eco-friendly alternatives for home lawn care and how to use glyphosate safely.
Keep Pitt Green. To learn more, scan the QR code on screen or visit.
Thank you. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much. At this time, entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
Same.
It's been moved improperly second, Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. If we could now move on to item number nine, items for discussion. Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just up for consideration tonight, it's in our board packet, but I would just like our board to consider a resolution in support of the United States and our partners in its response to the people of Ukraine and Ukraine, and just I would move that we adopt this resolution, and that'll be all.
Thank you very much.
Move or approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I hope you can cut it down.
Madam Court, it's been moved improperly second.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
No.
Vice Chair Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Motion passes seven to two.
If we could now move on to items for decision, Mr. Corley.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone tonight. This next item relates to our sheriff's administration building that we're moving forward with, mainly the design portion, as you're aware. At our Capital Improvement Plan workshop, you were told about the price increase on the project, and as that goes, so does the architectural fees that are typically based on percentage of the construction cost. So this is the amendment with JKF Architecture, who's our architect on the project, basically to explain the size, the size expansion of the building from twenty thousand to approximately thirty-three, two sixty-seven, as well as the planned dates for the phases of the project. On the second page of the agreement has the totals that are based on a reduced fee. So John Farkas has actually reduced his fee, his percentage fee, although the total amount has gone up, his percentage fee has gone down. So tonight, we're asking for approval to, for the manager to sign this amendment so we continue on this project on the design portion.
Move to approve. Seconded.
It's been moved improperly second, Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
I have a question, if I could. Why fees based on a certain percentage? Where does that come from?
That is, every architectural contract that I've ever dealt with has typically been based on cost of construction, so that's typically anywhere from six to nine percent of the total construction cost. Matter of fact, most are drawn up so that they actually, the fee is actually not known until the project is bid.
See, here's the problem I have with that. So steel doubles in price. Did it cause the architect to spend five more minutes? I'm going to vote no. I'm sorry.
I understand where you're coming from.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Motion passes seven to two.
I want to take a quick second. I failed to mention in the monthly report, I think at the last meeting you had wanted us to check to make sure we did not have any contracts or vendors that had ties back to the country of Russia, and we have gone through, we have forty-eight thousand vendors. We have eleven, excuse me, we have nineteen that are outside the United States, and none of them are Russia. So I just wanted to clarify that, I meant to mention that earlier. I bring with you tonight a budget amendment and a reimbursement resolution, as we mentioned at our last meeting in March and at our CIP workshop, that we are working with Pitt Community College to look at advancing their welding building project. We are looking to look, we are looking at partnering also with local banks to finance the cost of this project. And in talking with Pitt Community College, they actually have a meeting tomorrow, in order to move the project along so that we can get to the bid phase, we would like to front the cost of the design and then reimburse ourselves when we do go out for our loan to build the building. So the budget amendment tonight will take money out of fund balance, one point five million dollars is the budget that we have set for the community college so they can move forward with the design of their new welding building.
Move to approve.
Motion approved.
I second it.
It's been moved improperly second, Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good evening again. At your February seventh meeting, you directed staff to look at your law enforcement ordinance, number one, the noise ordinance, and propose some revisions for your consideration. On page sixty-five of your packet is the summary of that and attached track change version of that ordinance. Real quick summary of the changes is it eliminates language in there that certainly specially-designated officers would enforce the noise ordinance, now allows it to be enforced by any Pitt County sheriff's deputy. It increases the possible criminal penalty from five hundred dollars to four hundred dollars, and now for the first time adds civil penalties, which would be in the amount of one hundred dollars for the first offense, two hundred dollars for a second offense, and four hundred dollars for any subsequent offense.
Motion approve. Seconded.
Just if I'm a Mr. Chair, just wanted to raise something in reviewing it. Thought something we might want to consider to add in this modification is there was no note about taking a recording or picture or any, because I understand there's a meter that reads the sound. I thought it might be some benefit when this inevitably gets to court, that there's some record that's visible when the citation's given, and it should be easy, it's twenty-first century picture, or I know that our sheriffs have body cameras, if that's, if there's something that actually shows that reading, just so that there's something that can be referred back to on the record, easy for the state to prove its case if it comes necessary. So I would just like to suggest that small modification, that we add, add something there for that added layer of security for the state in enforcement of this provision.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Is it really going to be necessary? You're going to have sworn deputies that are actually doing the monitoring, they're going to go before court wall, they're going to raise their right hand potentially and swear to tell the truth. Will they want to risk their job and the credibility of the entire department by telling a lie? I don't think so. So I don't think it's necessary.
I also have, whenever. I know that this kind of came about because of some concern over the crypto mining and how loud that is, and I do agree that there needs to be, if it ever were to come to Pitt County, some protections in place for citizens that would live around. some protections in place for citizens that would live around that area. But my concern as a citizen that lives out in the county, and maybe Mr. Smith, maybe you can kind of help clarify. If you've got somebody that is target shooting in their backyard or they have a dog outside barking, I mean, is this, could this be used as a neighbor to call and just complain to get back at another neighbor? And I'm not sure what the laws are regarding the noise ordinances. There are some deputies here, maybe they could kind of help put my mind at ease about that.
So I'll try my best to answer that question in some way. So the ordinance as is, has a section on exemptions, that's on page 70. And there are, I don't know, seven or eight enumerated activities that are applicable under the noise ordinance, meaning it doesn't apply. Any type of firearm shooting is currently not one of those exemptions. This board could certainly add to that list if they saw fit. In my experience, I would defer to the sheriff and anybody from her staff to speak about it, but I do think that this noise ordinance was probably written at a time to address loud house parties and other type of neighborly disputes of, you know, of different varieties and flavors. And I don't know how frequently it is enforced currently with an actual citation being issued. I think oftentimes, the mere fact that law enforcement's called out kind of distinguishes or takes care of the situation. There's some type of discussion amongst law enforcement and the property owners. I think it's fair to say that citations, as of now, aren't written in abundance. But I would defer to the sheriff's office if anybody, like the sheriff, do you wanna address that?
I would agree with Mr. Smith. Most of the times when we get calls for loud music complaints, it's simply a matter of showing up, officer's presence, and a request to ask them to turn it down. And typically, that's all it takes. We've, we're not frequently writing citations. We don't frequently have complaints of firearms at certain times of night, unless it's, of course, something more nefarious. But typically, it is just a matter of us showing up, officer's presence, and a request to turn it down. And we generally will get compliance immediately.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I wanna go back to Commissioner Nunley's suggestion that we add something to it or to make it more solid when it goes to court. And I would not think, Tom, that you could use that same scenario to saying that the officer would not, once he raised his hand. But we have body cameras to prove what is being, what is being done at that particular time. And that has proven to be very helpful in a lot of cases. So I just wouldn't say that take the place of not having some kind of machine or something as Chris is suggesting that we add to this, to this ordinance, to this noise ordinance. And this come about because of the crypto. So we wanna be sure that we, that we can measure the noise and to protect our citizens.
I would like to add an exemption for recreational shooting in there as one of the exemptions.
Don't we already have that? Certain times they can allow, they're not allowed to do that, Janice?
Not with, so currently, there's no exemption within your noise ordinance? And we don't otherwise regulate shooting, other than, we don't otherwise regulate shooting?
In any way.
Right, that was considered by the board and not passed times ago. Is that right, Jordan?
That's correct. There is a, I believe, county ordinance prohibiting hunting on Sundays, but that's specifically to hunting.
And different than recreational shooting. So there's currently a motion and a second on the floor to approve it as is.
Commissioner Nunley's got.
Yep, if there's a substitute motion or any other comment.
Mr. Chair, if I may, substitute motion with just added, so the ordinance as proposed by staff with a line that indicates that there's some recordation of the reading that is, whether it be digital or physical, so that there's a primary representation of that reading to accompany the ticket. And that would be my substitute motion.
And I second that substitute motion.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded, the substitute motion.
You'd vote on the substitute motion first.
Correct. Did you have a second on the substitute?
There was. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if there was a reading done and recorded in violation of whatever statute it would be under, it would have to be noted on the citation itself from the beginning. So I don't, maybe some redundancy in requiring additional recordation or different things may create more issues than.
So I did, and so I did speak to the county attorney about this, whether or not there was a recordation requirement. And it was my understanding that there was not.
Yes, sir. I believe, if I understand, as I understand, Commissioner Nunley is asking for some type of, the sound machine has a reading of the highest decibel level. I believe Commissioner Nunley is wanting some type of photograph, video, showing that. I believe, Chair Fitzpatrick, your point was that the citation would reference the applicable ordinance. I think, if I'm hearing y'all both talking about, I guess, two different things, and I understand everybody correctly.
My concern as someone who would be defending that, if that step had not been taken and it was not followed correctly, then that may be on grounds for dismissal.
Well, and I guess.
So in adding additional hoops to jump through.
And I guess the reason for raising it is that we're removing that we're requiring a certified officer. And so that was, that would be the reason that I raised it, just if we're, if we're gonna increase the penalties and remove the certification. I just felt, I just felt like it was on both sides about, you know, that's.
Commissioner McLauren, did you have a comment?
No, what I wanted to do was just hear some more clarification on that. I think the sheriff, if I'm not mistaken, it was some parts of the shooting that you said you had no, it wasn't a problem in terms of you talk to people and have that, you know, dealt with immediately. I'm trying to get some balance on this, you know, this concern, that's all.
When I came into office, I fought for body cameras and I fought for that for a reason. Body cameras would suffice when our officers go on a scene that would record all and any and all interaction out there on the scenes. That was the purpose of body cameras in the first place. So, I mean, I don't know, I think the evidence or the level of evidence should, would probably be a requirement or something that comes from the district attorney. Who knows how or what it would take to prosecute the case? And certainly, if the district attorney says, hey, this is what you need to solidify this case, then we're gonna do whatever it is to prove our case. Secondarily, our officers take an oath to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. And so any, all of that information would be recorded within the report. But the body cameras should suffice for anything that goes on on the scene. That was the purpose.
I have no question.
Get Tom first.
Okay.
Commissioner Coulson?
I have a question about the body camera. The proximity of the meter and where it is, would the body camera really be able to pick it up and read it? The other thing that, what type of meter do we have? There are actually three types of sound meters out there. One is an analog, and that's with a little needle popping around and stuff like that. Do we have that? And you record the highest reading? Or is it a digital and it records the highest for some sustained period of time? So do you happen to know what kind of meter we have?
I don't have that information right offhand. But I will be more than happy to find it and provide it for you, yes.
Yeah, I would think you'd wanna test it with your body camera. My objection is, I don't wanna put handcuffs on you as far as the sheriff to determine what your deputies need to go out there in order to be able to administer this ordinance. And if we say we gotta have some written record or some record, well... I don't know, I just have trouble with it, I'm sorry.
Ms. Reynolds?
I was about to ask, would your body cameras pick up this reading that would be necessary to permit, I mean, to submit to, with the?
I mean, I would think it would be nothing more than a simple turning that device, that meter around while on the scene, and the body cam records what the reading, what the levels are.
Will it focus that close?
Yes, sir.
Two feet away or a foot and a half away?
Maybe one day I should show you how much these body cameras have been a great tool. And it picks up everything.
I do not wanna see one professionally. Not a thing.
Mr. Chair, I just want to know, Sheriff, your thinking on whether we need additional machinery or whatever you wanna call it to ensure that we can test the level of noise properly?
This has been the way that we've done it for years, is using the meters.
I know, but we get ready, right now, I mean, all of this came about because of crypto.
Absolutely, I understand that.
So are we equipped to handle that type of noise?
We have noise meters. That's what I can tell you, that is what we use when we have noise complaints, specifically as it relates to music, something that's constant. You know, we were talking about gunfire earlier. That's typically not a constant.
No, that's not.
So there's no way to measure really that unless it's two or three hours of shooting. I mean, as much ammunition is now, I don't know who has the opportunity to do that. But, you know, we typically go out. We have to be within so much of a distance from that particular, where the noise is coming from. And we test it with the meter to see if it is in compliance. But most of the time, when we go out and we, in those situations, it's mere officer presence to go out there. Typically, if we do get to, it's discretionary as to whether we give a citation or it could be a class three misdemeanor, depending. And usually, that wouldn't go up to that level unless you got, if you were repeatedly going to the same residence and they were refusing to turn the music down. That rarely happens. But we have the noise meters, we have body cameras. I know that, you know, surely the district attorney would have an expectation that we at least record that event and record what the meter reads at that point. And it's merely of turning that meter around and getting a recording of it on our body cameras. I don't, I don't think it takes more than that, is what I'm saying. I don't think it takes more.
And, well, if I might clarify this specifically, what I'm requesting is that that step is taken, right? I'm not saying that we need an extra device or an extra picture. If our equipment that's being utilized in the field can pick it up, that's all I'm requesting that we get that step.
I can assure you that that happens with any case that we work.
So if I'm, if so, in other words, if I'm, if we have a crypto mining facility or any type of facility that's a violator of this, of this ordinance, I wanna have the highest and best evidence when we go into the courtroom.
And we do too.
And this is not a knock against the sheriff's department and sheriff's deputy, we're just saying that let's ensure that we're doing, we're doing our level best to make sure that what we're putting forward is the best. That's all my request.
And that is our objectives too, trust me, my officers. And when I was out there working cases, I don't like to lose cases. And these officers are very well equipped and very well trained and understand what it takes to make the case. So that's not gonna be an issue at all.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that does it for me. I mean, you know, if that takes care.
So we have a motion and a second on the substitute motion.
I think we were already in the voting.
Chris, you wanna withdraw? Or just withdraw?
No, because what I'm requesting is that the sheriff's department's digital device record the meter. I mean, we don't have to do anything extra. It's just an extra line that that actually happens. That's what I'm requesting.
Okay, 'cause it's not in there.
It's not in there.
So, well, I think that, so that's the motion.
Okay. Okay. I'm fine.
Madam Court?
That's my second.
And this is on the substitute motion, which is to approve the ordinance amendment with the additional changes suggested by Mr. Nunley.
And before the board votes, if the vote's not unanimous, this will require a second reading at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
No.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLauren?
No.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
No.
Commissioner White?
No.
Motion fails six to three. So the original motion is to adopt the proposed revisions to the ordinance as drafted and direct the clerk to update the code of ordinance and historical notes. Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
No.
Commissioner McLauren?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
We will bring this back for your next agenda for a second reading. Does the board wanna provide any direction as to whether or not that goes on for item for decision or item for consent?
Either's fine with me.
Consent suits me. Since this was a majority, the consent suits me and we can take it off if there's any reason.
There's only one opposing.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you want this back on as an item for decision next time as a controversial item or can we add it on as an item for consent?
Well, maybe if the sheriff can, because she says she can bring some information, more information about what her, I think we do. So if you put it on the, for discussion.
Leave it on items for decision unless we hear otherwise from the commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, for decision.
Okay. It would be decision, not discussion, because it was on decision tonight.
Oh, okay.
So it would be the second reading as an item for decision.
Okay, so same thing.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
If we can now move on to item number four, jail medical contract.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Chief K. Part, chief of the detention center. Just wanna say hello to everyone, commissioners, this is my first time. I've had a chance to work with Janice quite a bit and Mr. Barnett. And I wanna pass these out to you. And I'm here for the item of decision as it relates to the jail medical contract. The current jail medical contract with WELPAP expires on June 30th of 2022. Pitt County issued RFP of the jail medical service on October the 5th of 2021. Seal proposals were received by the three providers. WELPAP being one, MEDICO being another, and Advanced Correctional Healthcare being a third. All proposals were reviewed by the internal committee made up of Sheriff Dance, myself, Chief of Detention Service, Lem K. Part, Captain Nancy Poston, Captain Rodney Jacobs, Public Health Director, Dr. John Souvenell, and Chief- Public Health Director, Dr. John Souvenell, and Chief Financial Officer, Brian Barnett, and then County Manager, Scott Elliott, and then County Attorney, Ms. Janice Gallagher. The internal committee conducted the interviews with all three companies, and the sheriff recommends that county enter into the attached contract with WellPath for a three-year term at a cost of $3,131,765.27. Motion to authorize the chairman to execute the attached contract with WellPath. As previously stated, WellPath was selected of the three companies. WellPath is located in 10 counties in the state of North Carolina, which is 10% of the counties in North Carolina. They're represented by Brunswick County, Durham County, Guilford, Mecklenburg, Pender, Transylvania, Columbus, Rowan, and currently Pitt County. Five of these counties are participating in the MAT program. MAT stands for Medication-Assisted Treatment, and this is where inmates who are once approved receive Suboxone, medications to help them with the opiate abuse disorder. Five counties participate in that includes Durham, Guilford County, Mecklenburg, New Hanover, and Pitt County. These counties are pivotal counties in the state of North Carolina, in my opinion. Below, I have the benefits of the medical plan. The requirement of the basic level of care are increasing to meet the needs based on the NCCHC standards. NCCHC standards is National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. It allows for reduction in liability risk and also insurance premium deductions. Reinforced basic care established by the Supreme Court in 1976 in a landmark case, Estelle versus Gamble, by eliminating unreasonable barriers and implementing best practices as it relates to medical care in the jail as well as mental health. Basic levels of care include mental health, allowing access to treatment and medication. Accreditation, our goal as an agency is become an accredited facility, this is critical, and the reason it's critical, because this is the national standards for correctional facility in the United States, and this is the basic care. WellPath has provided good support for the chronic illnesses that are in the facility, COVID, before, during, and after the diagnosis, substance use disorder, Dr. Souvenell can attest to that, de-opiate abuse, fentanyl, methamphetamine, heroin, detoxing, and mental health services. Keep in mind, fentanyl is 100 times more powerful than heroin, which is laced in the drugs that many of the inmates that come into the facility use in today's time. Obviously, it is a crisis throughout the United States of America, and obviously, mental health is a crisis in the United States of America as well. WellPath also provides IRMA. IRMA is an acronym, Electronic Medical Records Administration. Paper filing is becoming obsolete day by day. Better is access to patients' medical charts, instant reports on money spent on catastrophic events, and accurate data for grant writing. WellPath has been extremely supportive of the programs, the program coordinator, obviously, we have the SHARP program, which is the Sheriff's Heroin Addiction and Recovery Program. We also have the WARE program, which is the Women Empowerment and Recovery Program. We have the GED program, we have the MAT, which is Medication-Assisted Treatment, we have the MRT, which is Moral Recognition Therapy. We do have the social worker, the social worker is instrumental in working with the WARE women that come into the facilities that need a direct access and communication with the social workers on the outside that represents, you know, social services. The jail navigator is critical because the jail navigator helped facilitate when the mental health inmates come into the facility, trying to create housing for them to go to once they're released from the facility. In the past, the problem was that when it was time for them to be released, there was no place for them to go, and obviously, many times, they ended up back into the detention center, and some have even lost their lives trying to find their way back. Port has been instrumental, they have worked hand in hand with WellPath as it relates to providing Suboxone, they provide peer support specialists as well as clinician, and mental health support has been provided by WellPath. Experiences, I just want to speak about that a little bit. COVID crisis in the past two years has left many sicker and more compromised with pre-existing conditions. The effects of COVID on the economy has not only changed the needs of the population, but it has caused tremendous inflation in service needs as well as prices. WellPath has stepped up by being responsive to those unforeseen needs that we have had to experience. It takes a minimum of five months, and that's what I come to understand after spending time with the medical providers and actually having the experience of having WellPath in the facility for the past nine months. It takes five months, and even in some of the other studies, they said on average somewhere between four and five months just to get acclimated for a smooth transition into a new medical facility. WellPath and our staff at the detention center have made the adjustments to meet those needs. Inflation costs of doing business in today's climate, medical care in the jail costs are rising, services are rising, equipment costs, medications, and also the workforce, and that is a big one. The recruitment of an LPN and RN has, is very challenging, particularly due to the last two years as it relates to COVID, and let alone the other crises that we've had in the United States of America. The wages have increased, for an example, an LPN two years ago made $22 an hour, but today, that LPN value is $26 an hour. An RN went from $27 an hour to the upwards of $50 an hour, and even higher, it just depend on the regions of this particular state because of the 10 facilities that are currently in North Carolina, and we know that Guilford and Charlotte require, or Mecklenburg require sometimes a little bit more expense. RNs access patients' care, patients and starts IVs, they collect blood samples, they conduct various diagnosis or diagnostic tests, they work with the physicians to determine the treatment plans. LPNs can ask questions, but limited in their scope of work. Intake is sometimes like the ER, we're never sure of what's going to enter into the facility. I can attest to that after 30 years of doing it as a supervisor. Because of an RN, we saved an inmate and was able to refuse that inmate and send him to the hospital, he was a detainee that was brought into jail, had ingested drugs prior to incarceration, and coded upon intake. Thank God for Narcan, and thank God for responsive staff. Another example, war trips to the hospital, COVID, sicker inmates, stronger, highly concentrated drugs that are delirious, leading to detox needs and severely challenged physical and mental health needs. Let's face it, today, the jail has become the new mental health facility. The percentage of inmates being diagnosed and requiring mental health services has increased substantially. Police drop-offs, we've talked about this in our committee meetings, released from the hospital inmates, not well enough for jail, female detained, had pneumonia and ended up needing surgery, that became at our expense. Hospital police brought in a detainee with a gunshot wound to the head, less than 12 hours after the incident, hospital released the detainee after giving pain medications, OD'd at the jail, requiring an RN to administer medications and use Narcan, I believe, multiple time in this incident to save his life. Many cases are coming to the jail in today's time that are in need of Narcan upon entry into the facility. With that being said, it is incumbent upon us to have RNs stationed at the entrance point of the facility to do the assessments on inmates coming in and out of the, coming in the facility for housing. They have the better skill set and the best skill sets to determine if that inmate is needed to be admitted into the jail or sent to the hospital prior to we accepting them, because once we accepted them, except the inmate, it costs us money, it costs Pitt County money, so that good assessment is needed. In conclusion, the cost is slightly above $3.1 million for fiscal year '22 to '23, and all three companies were fairly consistent around that $3 million mark, although there's a slight variation of one of those companies. The full-time FTE or full-time employee was a total of 24.55 FTEs. We had RN increase by 4.2 FTEs, we had a mid-level nursing, nurse practitioner or physician assistance, .2 FTE increase, and increased that role from 32 hours to 40 hours a week. We had one med tech full-time position, and we had one mid-level provider increase of .40 of a position, and we had the LPN detox nursing increase by 1.40 positions. In conclusion, there's a change in time, and there's a change in how we deal with inmates that are incarcerated in the jail as it relates to the medical needs as well as the mental health needs throughout the nation. I think it is incumbent upon us for our due diligence to make sure we take care of the citizen that entered the jail, that leaves the jail, and go back to the same community in which they came from, we value them as citizens too. Any questions?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation, Chief Kate Hart. My question is, how often is the jail without an on-site provider?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
How often is the jail without an on-site provider?
Can you explain a little bit more in details? We do have the HSA available currently from 8 to 5 Monday throughout Friday, 40 hours a week.
What is the HSA?
HSA is the administrator of nursing for the facility, and the HSA responsibility is to act as the daytime supervisor for, and that person is an RN.
So there's always an RN at the jail?
On the day hours, there's always an RN.
Okay, so what do you do during the nighttime when there's not an on-site provider, or what does WellPath do?
Currently, we do have providers at night as well, but currently, we don't have providers in the intake area. In our new plan going forward, providers would be stationed at the intake area, and it would be a RN stationed at the intake area on all four shifts, and the RN has the responsibility of making sure that the assessments are thorough, that even in downtime, if the person is sober when they come in, you're able to do physicals in that downtime, help speed up the process, and they're able to find out if there's any other medical needs of the inmates to prepare them for whether or not they're going to be good candidates for, like the mental health program, or whether they're going to be good candidates for the drug program as it relates to MAT for referrals to the doctor. Anything else?
I was just curious, because I was made aware of a situation that happened over the weekend, that there was an EMS report stating that someone was brought to the jail, and there was an issue with the refusal, and nobody, there was not an on-site provider, so they had to call a nurse in another state to deal with that.
There's always a provider on duty, and there was no report of that made to me at all over the weekend. Normally, Monday, we kind of get feedback, I do have my team of captains here, we're in new administration, and we try to be thorough and systematic with how we do things, but I haven't had any feedback in reference to your claim today, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Coulson?
I'd like to ask about the increase, I understand the times have changed, you indicated some improvements with a number of people and more staffing and so on, but a 50% increase?
I anticipated that that would be a question tonight, but we have to consider the times that we're in. We have catastrophic situation as it relates to the mental health crisis, we have catastrophic situation as it relates to COVID in the past two years, and if we just take the salary of nursing alone, and if we take a look at the increase in their salaries, and they're commanding that salary increase, particularly in jails, because a nurse doesn't necessarily go to college and think about the Ivy of working in a jail. Only after the fact, after they gain experience and learn about it through some of the processes of recruiting employees for the jobs, but when COVID happened, and there became a shortage of nurses throughout the United States, then nurses started to kind of set the tone for what they wanted to be paid, and I think currently, that trend is still trending because there is a need for their skill set. LPNs at our facility has worked for us for the time period that we travel through, but in the 21st century of how drugs are manufactured today, and many of them are synthetic, the liability on Pitt County rests sometimes at that entry point of the door, and I do understand totally what you're saying, because I'm a conservative thinker also, but I thought very sincerely, I knew that question would be very popular tonight, and I would expect that question to be asked, but I'm saying to you tonight that in my 30 years, I've been a manager for 29 years, and I've been chief now for about nine months, but in that experience, just experiencing some of the challenges that we faced, there have, there could have been more inmates that was unresponsive in our facility, but thank God to the services that WellPath provided that I don't think they got the credit for during this nine-month tenure that we've had with them, they stood by us, we had no deficiencies as it relates to the reports from North Carolina standards, they've done a good job. I would say they performed at satisfactory level. The cost, I do understand it, it's just that we're in a time that if we step back, and if we looked at anything different, then we'll be deceiving ourselves and thinking that we're going to be successful with the agency moving forward.
Well, I appreciate everything you said, but it's all kind of nebulous to me, you speak to a couple of incidences about pay, but you are not 100% breaking the cost down. As a manager of company, I would look at things and say, prove it to me, and right now, maybe you can't prove it to me.
And another item that-
Maybe it's not something that's provable, but I would challenge, and I don't know whether what I'm about to say should take us into closed, you know, session or not, because I don't want to get us in trouble one way or the other, but there have been problems with WellPath, and is that something we can discuss openly now? Or can we take it to closed session, take that portion of it to closed session?
So you can't talk about any confidential, and I'll defer to the attorney, you can't talk about any confidential medical information in open session, if you have generalized concerns that are not patient-related?
Well, this would be confidential, I'm pretty sure.
Then that should not be disclosed in open session.
Okay, well, then, I'm going to say that any action tonight should be postponed till after we can have a closed session discussion on it, and the other thing too is- And the other thing too is, I'll use the animal shelter. We got in trouble with the animal shelter. We, as I understood it, by law, we had to go with low bid. We went with low bid and we got burned. Now, do we not have to go with low bid here?
No.
Are we not forced to?
No.
Well, that's good. Okay, I like the idea that at least we have some discretion there. And Medico, well, I don't know. I mean, I'm hearing that there was a discussion by staff and the sheriff and various people. Y'all got together and would all, Janice, you were there. Okay, from a staff standpoint, would you say that the case has been made that we probably ought to go with WellPath?
Yes, so I-
Am I putting you in a spot?
You're putting me on the spot, but you can put me on the spot and that's fine. I would say, I would start by saying, I think we followed the process to the T as directed by the Board of Commissioners. We, as a committee, got together, we updated the jail medical plan, we collectively drafted an RFP, we sent that out, we had three proposals and the entire committee interviewed each of those proposals. I would say all of the prices were fairly similar. I think each provider had pros and cons. And after multiple discussions and investigation at our final or second to last meeting, Chief Capehart and the sheriff made their presentation to the committee about why they believed WellPath was the best provider for the service. And I would say, in my opinion, it primarily hung upon if all services were being considered equally, WellPath was existing in the facility and you would eliminate the transition and benefit from the growth that occurred during that period of the transition.
Okay, so did that committee actually take a vote and make a recommendation?
We did not take a vote, but there was a recommendation and then by the sheriff and then the committee talked about how that would be presented to the Board of Commissioners and that's what you're seeing here tonight.
So there was no consensus or anything like that?
I would say there was no verbalized objection. There wasn't a formal vote or anything like that on the staff committee. But we, the sheriff understood and Chief Capehart understood that they would need to come to the board today to lay out like they've done, tell their story, tell why they think we need to be here, what gives you the value from an additional million dollars and what their vision is for the future medical care at the jails.
Well, I like the records keeping, but I would like to ask, not today, but sometime in the near future, for staff to come back to us with some kind of look at the mental health portion. I mean, that is a problem. You're right, Chief, what is it? Capehart, that, I apologize, that it is a new mental health facility. When the state did away with mental health years ago, they messed things up, something Could E-Block be converted since it's not really used? Could it be converted into, and what would the cost be to make it a facility that addressed the mental health so that they're not in, I'm going to say with the hardened criminal? And maybe try to help them more, because you take somebody who's got a mental health problem and throw them in with a bunch of ill-fits. I mean, it's a, it would seem to me be a breeding ground for them to get worse, not better.
And here's what I, if I may, here's what I would say to that, is we've been very careful to look at and delineate the responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners, which is to enter into this contract and to pay for this contract and to select the contract among the proposals versus the day-to-day operation of the jail, which remains within the exclusive purview of the sheriff's office. And so I hear you and I think any one of us could come up with our suggestions. I do have confidence in Chief Capehart and his full staff and the sheriff in their operational methods. I think that when we look at opening additional parts of the jail, all of that takes a whole lot more money.
And that's the thing, I know it will cost more money, but are we kidding ourselves in not spending that money? How many people could we truly help if we spent that amount of money, whatever it is? So come back to us, tell me what it is. If it's $82 million, I'm probably going to say, well, we've got to rethink this.
And what I would, what I would say is, I think that investing this amount of money in the level of medical care with the additional RNs and the additional staff and the additional folks at intake around the clock will, I think you ought to see the results of that. I would suggest a phased approach because you can't do everything and fund everything all at once. And so this is a significant step from where you are to where you're going. And I think this is a proposed three-year contract. And I think if you, I think if you looked at last year to this year, I think if you looked at before MAT in the jail to current MAT in the jail, you would see measurable results and improvements in your outcomes. I think if you look at the last year of care, it's changed. And I think if you fill in the gaps that have been raised or concerned about, as Chief Capehart explained, if you fill in those gaps with the additional providers that are offered in the current contract, I think you'll continue to see an increased measurable improvement in the services that are offered. I think when you get to that point, we can look deeper. I think at this, and I think we defer to the healthcare provider in terms of how they want to separate and treat, but I think you have to take those in phases. And my recommendation as your manager is that for today, we tackle this phase and you keep all those other operational thoughts in your mind and ultimately their decisions of the sheriff. I feel like any great ideas that we have on this side, I can share. She will consider and she'll make a decision as to how she wants to operate the jail. So I think from my perspective, we start today with the phase of this contract. None of us, none of us, and I say us as a team, like the additional million dollars that's associated with this increased cost. But as your manager, I don't have an alternative to the cost and I don't have any objection to the selection of the provider.
And as far as the closed session, did we put that off?
What I, what I would say as manager-
Because you know where I'm going with this. You know exactly what I'm thinking.
I believe I know where you're going and I believe I know what you're-
You know exactly what I'm thinking.
I believe that I do and I don't know that that discussion will have a direct bearing on your options today. Those options being approve WellPath or provide an alternate direction. And in that alternate direction, none of that alternate direction will save cost. I think it's in the county's best interest to move forward. I think it's within the county's best interest to make a decision and to move forward to provide the best care that we can have. And I really do hope that this vision of an accredited facility, which is providing care consistent with the county's vision to be a leader in the state and the best in the East, is where we are now. Is it going to be perfect? Absolutely not. Are there going to be instances that we hear information or parts of information that cause us concern? Absolutely. And I'll also say too, that I know that there were some, and I'll say generalized concerns or incidences at the jail. And based on independent investigation by the state, there was no wrongdoing found by anyone at the jail or anyone with the jail health provider. And so I'm confident that based on the information we have right now in open session, that the board is equipped to make the decision and that's up to you.
With that, then I withdraw any requests that are in inference that I made to go to closed session.
Commissioner Nunley? Commissioner McLawhorn, I know you have a comment.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Capehart, for that very excellent presentation and the way that you presented it. I certainly want to thank our manager for a point of clarification because I see that this is a needed and certain that we've come a long way. And one thing I noticed, and this may be just minor, you mentioned that WellPath is located in 10 counties in North Carolina, and I'm thinking that New Hanover County was left off of the, I'm counting nine. At the beginning of your presentation, there was Durham, Kielford, Ecklerburg, Pender, Transylvania, Clalumis, Roy and Penn. But I don't see New Hanover, but I see New Hanover on the participating of the MAT program. Was that a, is New Hanover in it?
Because Sheriff McMahon of New Hanover County, which is the Sheriff McMahon of New Hanover County, which is the head of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, and they definitely have WellPath as their provider.
Okay, okay. With that said, Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion that we proceed with this as the manager suggests that we move forward with it.
A second motion.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Chief, if I could, just would be remiss if I did not bring this to attention with the large increase in costs.
I'm sorry.
I would like to bring this to your attention with the large increase in costs that we're going to be facing over the next three years. I would just ask that that be taken into account when we come back for budget proposals.
I'll definitely do that.
Thank you.
Because I do understand.
Those pencils sharp. Thank you very much.
As a taxpayer at that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now move on to item number five.
I said, I don't think the sheriff was on board with that.
Mr. Chairman, for item number five, you have appointments and reappointments to the Board of Equalization Review. You'll see on page 94 of your package that Mr. Creem is recommending Mr. Albert Buck be appointed to the Pitt County Board of Equalization and Review. And if appointed, Mr. Buck will serve a full term that expires February 28, 2025. As well, appoint, to reappoint, it's recommended Mr. Jeremy King as chair and Mr. Andy Piner.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved improperly second, Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. And your last item for action this evening are reappointments to the Pats Board. The Pats Board is recommending Ms. Marsha Hall, Mr. Jonas Hill, Ms. Angela Brown, Ms. Desha Lane, Mr. Rich Zek and Mr. James Yonker to be reappointed to the Pitt Area Transit System Advisory Board. If reappointed, they would all serve another term that expires April 15, 2025. It is noted if you approve this slate, that Mr. Zek and Mr. Yonker have served the maximum amount of terms and this would be an exception to your board appointment policy.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
It's been moved in second, Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed unanimously.
Now move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Coulson.
I would like to ask staff to give the board an update following the court ruling that the red light cameras are unconstitutional as to what's going to happen with the money? Does it get returned? Where does it go? What's the next step down the, down this, you know, road?
We can provide an item for report at your next meeting.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
No comment.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes, I have a comment. I received several calls about the trash on Old River Road. I hate to keep bringing it up, but someone said there were two mattresses that appeared over the weekend. And I like to say to the residents, if you're moving and your furniture falls off the truck, please stop, go back and pick it up. No one wants to build a multimillion-dollar building in a trash dump. And the next thing I receive calls about, even when I'm away or here, a resident was calling me about the bridge on 222. Thirty months is two and a half years. There's a 20-mile detour. They're concerned about, I have talked with Mr. Rose about it. They are concerned about EMS. They're concerned about trash. They trash, what you call that thing?
Recycle.
Yeah.
Recycling center.
Yeah, the site.
Convenience site.
Convenience site, that's it. That's what I was looking for. He really hit me up.
I got the site right.
The convenience site that is used heavily by the Bervois area is in Falkland. And there was a resident, a lady today who called me and talked quite lengthy about five responses. And she talked about rescue and she talked about emergency. She lives in Falkland and her parents lives on Holland Road. And she was very concerned on the response and how the residents in the two areas are going to be served in emergency situations as it relates to those items and Highway Patrol. And I told her Highway Patrol could call another Highway Patrol. But there seems to be a lot of concern and I heard that they were doing, Mr. Tucker, Charles Tucker, made a report about the petition and they told me that there was a large group signing the petition. And they, I'm very in support of the concerns that the residents have with the road being closed on 222. And ShopPoint is, ShopPoint had a, and ShopPoint is a smaller space than it is over here and in a smaller county. And they had a bridge, a temporary bridge put up. So I know Mr. Rose is looking into it and is working with it and they are also calling our senator and they are calling our House of Representatives to let the two of them know what's happening here that they should be looking at for the residents in District Two. So I just want this board aware of it. There's a lot of concern out there as it relates to not only quality life, but the preservation of life for residents. And, you know, I asked the manager to look into trash. That never goes away, Lord, and how many bags have I picked up? But the residents are picking it up. We're working together on that, but we need some help. And I like to say that the sheriff did say that maybe in the near future, she will be able to help as the mask and all the other things go down relating to the COVID. So I thank you for your patience with me about the trash. I just don't know what to do. It's so bad. Thank you for your time and your patience with me on that, but it's getting worse.
Commissioner Nunley? No comment.
Commissioner White.
Commissioner Huggins?
Well, I just want to say that, going back to the North Orange waters, I want us to have everything in place, all the tools that we, that we need in order to, to protect the citizens in Pitt County. Because we dodged a bullet with the crypto when they came before us, they withdrew because we asked a lot of questions. And talking to a citizen today, he said they are coming back once the location is identified because it's going to be in the ETJ probably. And so I just hope that we have, we have all the tools to, or to measure this and to protect our citizens.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
No comment.
Commissioner Albright, are you still there?
Yes, no comment, thank you.
But Madam Manager, crypto never left and they understood that they're going to stay here in Pitt County somewhere, right?
So I will say there's nothing before this Board of Commissioners- So I will say there's nothing before this Board of Commissioners related to cryptocurrency in any form of application or jurisdiction, within our jurisdiction. So no comment on crypto.
I second it.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
He told me today.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Meeting stands adjourned.